Old Business Item One is consideration in action on proposed resolution expressing the common council's intent to borrow funds for the construction of the Woodman Sports and Convention Center, filed with Resolution Number 2022-2067. I'm going to turn this over to Acting City Manager Chief Moore to start us off.
Good evening. This has been a really a long and arduous process that brings us to today. It started, our journey started back in December of 2017, some five years ago. And at the city council's direction, we've had community surveys, site selections, and city staff has diligently researched and presented 11 city council presentations, 25 community outreach events, which contacted over 1,800 citizens over the last five years that brings us here to today. At the most recent city council meeting on November 28th, we sat in here for three hours and provided an update as to the status of the WSCC. And then city staff members and many other community members answered any and all questions that were posed during that evening. The way forward is at every city council meeting from the foreseeable future, we'll have an update on the WSCC, and the city council will be able to answer any questions that they have so that we can have this open and very public dialogue about the WSCC. The last council meeting was posted on YouTube. The discussion this evening will be posted on YouTube. And every future discussion about the WSCC will also be posted on YouTube for those individuals that can't make it here this evening. Further, we're developing a living, breathing FAQ. So as questions come in, we capture those questions, we answer those questions, and we'll post those publicly as well, again with the intent to have these discussions open in public and keeping everyone informed. So tonight, the discussion is on the resolution of funding for the WSCC. And we have Public Works Director Mike Payne and Neighborhood and Community Services Director Jennifer Petrazzolo to provide a very brief presentation and overview on the issue. And as aptly noted by Mr. Knott this evening, this is just part of the process. It's the opportunity to move this process forward. So with that, I'll turn the program over to Mike Payne.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Council. Mike Payne, Public Works Director. City staff is before the council this evening, seeking your intent to borrow funding for the WSCC project. This slide represents a preliminary concept rendering of what the WSCC may look like. City staff members, members of the Friends of the Indoor Sports and Convention Center, known as the FISC, and a representative of Rockstep Capital provided a comprehensive project update at the last council meeting on November 28th and responded to council questions following that presentation. Project partners that presented to the last council meeting are here again this evening in the event that council has questions at the end of this short presentation. The exist, the slide before you this evening identifies and outlines some of the key points that were included in the update to the council and the community at the last council meeting. I do not intend to review all of the items that were discussed, but I wanted to refresh people's memory on the overview slide here. And I would encourage those individuals who are interested in more information on this project to observe that full presentation and discussion that the chief outlined that occurred at the last meeting that took about three hours from start to finish. That information can be found on the city's website and be viewed at your convenience at home. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Neighborhood and Community Services Director Jennifer Petrazzolo.
Continuing with the short update, I wanted to bring forward a slide summarizing the estimated construction costs today and the capital funding sources for the city council's consideration. During the council's meeting two weeks ago, they requested staff to draft a resolution indicating project support and allowing the council to express their intent to borrow funds for this project. The council indicated they would discuss the specific amount to allocate at tonight's meeting. Approving a resolution at this time and expressing the city's intent to borrow really does several key things. It demonstrates a commitment on the city council's part to this project and to the community and potential supporters in this room, as well as ensuring a path forward that provides sufficient funding to complete a project as we've envisioned, based on the current construction cost and the current impending funding requests. This is really a critical action for the city and our private sector, as our private sector partners and the city continue to seek state and federal funding, naming rights, sponsorships, and private donations. The table here, you'll see at the top summarizes total project cost of $50.3 million. That is an all-inclusive cost with engineering, soft costs, and contingencies for the three-component concept plan that we've discussed previously. Potential funding sources are listed here as well. You'll see that private sector fundraising by the Friends of the Indoor Sports and Convention Center at $7 million. The congressionally-directed appropriation of $5 million, which is in the current federal appropriations bill. State funding coming from two different sources through the Department of Administration, Federal Economic Development Administration grant, and the city allocation for design, which has already occurred. You will see that brings our subtotal to $33 million and a difference of $17.3 million with the city's borrowing amount to be determined. Scroll in the wrong way. So staff's recommendation is that the city council express their intent to borrow and commit an appropriate amount of funding for the construction of the WSCC from such future city borrowing proceeds, and then adopt file resolution 2022-2067. You can tell from that prior slide that a minimum of $17.3 million would be requested if the intention is to support the project as we currently know it to be. And we have a suggested motion here for the council's consideration. Mike and I and our project team are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from the council? For the benefit of the community here, or we do have a question, okay, Councilor Mark Line.
I just had a question on the, on the motion. It talks about expressing an interest to borrow and commit. Are we committing money now, or does the future council have the ability when the bids come through to turn down this project and not borrow any money? Or are we locking ourselves into a box tonight?
This would be a non-binding commitment. There's no action that the current council can take that would fully bind a future city council.
So the intent of tonight on this resolution is to express our intent to move forward for a certain amount of money in the hopes that we're able to attract grants from other governmental units, state and federal governments, to facilitate the funding of this?
Yes, I would say the intent is to show that clear support for prospective funders, whether those be our state and federal granting partners or our private sector potential donors, so that it shows the council's commitment to do the project as we currently envision it.
Okay. The other one is we don't know the final cost of it. The recommendation is to borrow $17.3 million for the construction of this, if I understand the intent. There was a suggestion from the audience today that we cause that a not-to-exceed number. Is that something that would be a friendly amendment to this motion, or is that something that's going to cause us problems that I'm not aware of?
I would suggest that amending it to include a not-to-exceed amount would establish a ceiling and would not show a level of support that would complete the project at that level.
Okay. Had to ask, had to ask. All right, that's all I had for questions.
Councilor Williams.
Nothing against you, Walt. The way this resolution is written, I just want to clarify from legal staff, this does not force a future council to, to do the borrowing.
Correct. The Wisconsin law, the statutes set forth specific requirements for borrowing, none of which are present in this resolution. And it does not bind the council or any future council, this council or future council, to borrow any money or commit any funds to this project.
So it's just our intention. Can we, could we make that in the motion, that it is our intention, and like Council Member Mark Line suggested, not to exceed 17.3?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Jackson.
Jennifer, thank you. My, for the whole staff, for all you have done, I can only imagine the hours that you guys have put forth. Two people tonight have asked for an operational plan. How do you answer that question, please?
I would say that the city has undertaken several planning efforts at this point. We have, in addition to our initial feasibility study that looked at overall revenues and expenditures, we commissioned a business plan in 2019. That business plan took a look at many of the operational considerations and impacts of this project. It delved deeper into the revenues and expenses. It looked at rental rates or prospective rental rates, revenues that would be gathered through items such as ongoing sponsorships, events, tournaments, user fees. It looked at the expense side of operations. It looked at staffing levels and anticipated wage rates, as well as utilities and a full-line item budget, consistent with what we do for our city operations. Recently, we had a third review of that with, as part of this design process that was conducted by an individual named Jeff King under the organization of Ballard King. That was, again, a conservative look at operations. It considered what those operational costs would be in the year 2024. So it was intended to consider all of the inflationary effects that we have experienced. It was intended to look at what those revenues and expenses are in today's environment. That said, staff still believes that those numbers are conservative in terms of what it is showing for an operational projection. And when I say it's conservative, meaning that the operational shortfall that is estimated at $46,000 in year one is likely to be the high end of that because there are areas where the revenues are lower than we would expect to see with this, this particular business plan. And based on experiences that we have operating a current single sheet of ice, where you would expect those areas to exceed revenue with a three-component facility that's used year-round for the number of variety of uses that the Woodman Center would be used for. So, you know, there are still some questions about operations in terms of the management structure. And I think that until the council has approved a project, some of that discussion is perhaps a bit premature. But this operational analysis is a good, solid look, and it's the third one that we've had done. And each one has substantiated that the cost to operate this facility would be equal or less than a single sheet of ice that we do today. It assumes city ownership and it assumes city management. We would like to explore bringing in a management company to assist with operations. That would be a separate, open process that would occur after a council has approved the full project. We know we can do it with city staff. We're committed to doing that. We need to hire more people to do that. We're pretty lean, and that is built into the operational analysis.
Two follow-ups real quickly, just yes or no?
Okay.
In answer to the question then, we have or we do not have an operational plan?
I would say yes.
Okay. Another question that came up repeatedly was the cost to the user, the end user, the person that goes out on the ice or the hardwood or whatever. Is there a cost that we can communicate to this body?
There is a proposed fee schedule that is included in that operational analysis. It includes a different rate for each one of those items. So that information is currently available on the city's website in, as part of that operational analysis. It's also appears in, well, it will appear in our updated Q and A document because that is a question that we've been hearing from people.
Finally, and pardon my ignorance, I do not remember the answer to this question. Thus, the question, one of the speakers said that we lose money on the golf courses. I do not remember that. Could you answer that, please?
Someone in Finance do that. That's in the Parks Division.
I'm glad you don't remember either, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council Deputy Director Finance. The golf courses have made money since 2015.
With my recollection. Thank you, sir.
Yep. Other questions? Let me get everyone else to ask first. Everyone could have a chance first. Other people have questions they'd like to ask before we move on? I've got a couple of questions. The fee schedule, that would be reviewed on an annual basis with all the rest of our fees. So if we felt a fee was too high for public skate, we have the sole power to change that. True?
Absolutely, yeah. And there are some other additions we may want to add to that tentative fee schedule. For example, there wasn't a rate spelled out if somebody wanted to use a portion of the convention space. All of that will come to the city council for approval as part of the 2024 budget process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams, then you had a follow-up question?
Could you clarify on the naming rights? How long are the naming rights for?
The naming rights are for 20 years.
That's for, just for the center or for all of the different things within the center?
It's for all of the naming rights, so the centers and the main rinks. All of the naming rights that are being procured through the efforts of the Friends Group.
Okay. Question in the Ballard King, it shows a recovery cost of 96%, but if you read in their material, it says these types of facilities typically recover at 80%. That's a pretty good, why are, why are we saying this one is going to be 15% better?
I'm really glad you asked that question because there's been a lot of misinformation around it. But the, the consultant's report, based on the revenues and expenditures that are unique to our situation, indicates a cost recovery rate of 96% in the first year, between 95 and 97 in years one through three, I'm sorry, one through five. The comment in the report is, was intended to show what a typical facility similar to this nationwide might see in terms of a cost recovery rate and show that this one performs much better than the average, not that it's likely to be 80%. The three reasons why the consultant has shared that the cost recovery is likely to be higher in this situation are because of the unique revenue stream that we have that includes a 10% of room tax revenue and an anticipated lease payment from Alliant Energy as this is hoped to be a solar demonstration project. We've had extensive conversations with Alliant regarding. Secondarily, the offsetting reduction to our expenses through the donation, again, of in-kind services through the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau, who has agreed to provide the center with sales and marketing staff and other resources in the areas of marketing and promotion and sales. And thirdly, it's really the, the strength of our market and the agreements that we will have with our existing users that result in a higher cost recovery percentage.
Okay, but it does say that if you are going to try and get towards that, it really needs an aggressive marketing and promotion to, to get to there.
There is a comment in that, in the report about that related to sponsorships. That's one of the areas that we think that is conservative in the report. It looks to include $100,000 in sponsorship revenue, and the current arena greatly exceeds that amount today.
I did happen to send an email to Jeff King from Ballard King, and it was kind of, I found out that he worked for the city of Janesville one time back in the early 80s. One thing, and I'm just wondering if, if you have some, any input on this, he was surprised that no one mentioned to him about the casino going in in Beloit with all of the amenities going into Beloit while he was putting this report together. Do you have?
Yeah. Well, I think in part of it, it was not brought up because we don't believe that it's going to have an impact on the facility here in Janesville. The casino in, in Beloit right now, the convention is in their third phase of the project, so it's still in kind of a speculative mode. And I believe Jeff shared with you after the fact that the convention revenue is very low in the operational plan. So it's likely that there will be different groups of people that are interested in renting space in a casino than will be interested in renting space in this facility. So we don't think that it's going to have a significant impact.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
One other quick follow-up question on that 96% number. We've got other recreational facilities other than the golf courses. We subsidize all of those, true, Jennifer, just so the community understands, I think, so the, the pools, Dawson, Senior Center, the outdoor parks, and I think they're all greater than 50% subsidy? Shelley, am I right?
I'm going to let Shelley give you those details.
Yeah.
Thank you. Shelley Sapek, City Recreation Director. Correct. We do subsidize all of our recreation facilities, and that includes our Senior Center. It has, we are at a 31% operating ratio that we recover there. We have adult and family and youth, and then we recover approximately 50 to 60% with those programs and events. Our aquatics facilities has a 33% operating ratio. And then again, we're at about 90% or 88% at our current ice arena.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for staff before we move on to our discussion? Councilor Miller.
I'm just wondering, and I don't know who wants to tackle this one, the room tax revenue. If it were not going to be allocated to the project, where would this otherwise be allocated to? Happened to have our executive director from the JACVB here. I'm going to let her respond to that question.
This, again, is our portion of the room tax. It's not the portion that the city receives, so that would be going into our general promotion, promotional funds.
Do you find that this would prohibit some of the marketing that you are willing to give toward this project if it is given directly to operational funding?
We know that this project will increase room tax funds by increasing stays in those two shoulder seasons that I've talked about previously, knowing we'll have additional room nights in those January, February, March times. We know that'll increase room tax. We don't expect a huge impact to our general funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See no other questions, what's the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion? Someone to start with the motion? No one to start?
Sure.
Okay, Councilor Marshak?
I will move to adopt file resolution number 2022-2067 and expense, and express an intent to borrow and commit $17.3 million for the construction of the WSCC.
I'll second that motion. So a motion made by Marshak, second made by Benson. Anything further, Councilor Marshak?
Maybe.
Yeah. Please.
I want to echo what a couple people said, and that's a thank you to everybody that came and spoke, no matter what you said or how you feel about this, this is all part of the process. It's good to have discussions. I've talked about that in the council. If we all voted everything 7-0, that's not a good council. So you need to have these discussions. So I do appreciate every single buddy that talked. I had a lot of stuff. We've been here a long time. I'm not going to go through everything, but there's a couple of things I want to touch on that kind of came up through, through people's comments. One of them, and I think it was Mrs. Ryan, and I'm sorry, I don't remember names very well, but there was, there was a comment about, shouldn't we wait till we're more recovered from the pandemic and COVID? Businesses have closed. Well, guess what? A lot of those businesses that are struggling, are still struggling from COVID, would greatly benefit from this. So if we wait, do we lose a few more of those? Can we go now and save some of them from going out of business, from letting, laying off their employees? Because they will benefit greatly from this project. So I would say the opposite of, let's get this done now, support those businesses that need it, and not wait two years because maybe they won't be there to support any longer. The gentleman that, that mentioned me and my banker hat. Yeah, I'm not looking this at the way as a banker. I can't, right? The city's not here to make a profit. The city's here to provide services and amenities and support our community. So we, I can't look at this the same way. It's totally different. If this came to me as a bank project, yeah, it might be tough. But as a city council member entrusted to, to look out for our community, I think this is the right thing to do. I really do. It's tough. I know there's people that, that are out there, and every dollar does matter, and so you've got to find that balance. We have a commitment to them. We have a commitment to all these young kids that, that are going to enjoy this. We have a commitment to our grandkids, the next generation. We have a commitment to this community to make it the best we can be and continue to have this community grow. It was mentioned by a lot of people, and I've talked about this, I think, at every meeting we've had this discussion. The ability to attract and retain talent is critical to this community, and this project does that. We received an email, or I'm not sure where we got it, but somebody made a comment, we don't need these low-paying jobs, we need high-paying jobs. I would contend that this will help us. This will help attract businesses to come to Janesville that will pay taxes and offer those high-paying jobs. There's talk about, why doesn't the wealthy people? There's talk about, why doesn't the wealthy people, why don't the businesses pay for this? They are, right? Because they're taxpayers too. So they're making their decision, their taxes are going up too. Uptown Janesville, somebody kind of dismissed the donation because of the tax benefit. It's still a big donation. We're getting a prime spot with parking on Milton Avenue for a dollar. And for that, sure, they're going to get some additional business, but their taxes are going to go up. There's no question about that. The Beloit Casino has come up. So Phase 3 is the conference center. Phase 1 is the casino itself, right? So they got to get that built, get it up and running, start making money. Phase 2 then, I think, is the hotel water park. So that's probably a ways out. That conference center is probably quite a ways out. It's been, what, 25 years since they've been trying to get this thing done? So I don't know what the timeline is now, because there isn't a timeline. So I don't think we can make a decision and say, oh, well, what about this convention center? It's out there a ways. I really believe that. Talked about that. Yeah, like I said, I had a lot of other things that I was going to talk about, but people shared them. A lot of people had the same thoughts and ideas, so I just wanted to touch on those few things that came from the comments that we got. And just lastly, Mr. Knott, this is just the next step, right? This is a journey. This is a process, and we're not anywhere near the finish line. But to get to the next step, we've got to do this. We've got to show a strong commitment so we can go out to our other funding partners with a strong commitment that, yep, we want to do this, come get on the train with us and be a part of this journey. So I'm supportive of this. You might be able to tell. Thank you.
I also want to thank everyone for coming, and I'll keep my comments brief as well, so most of the things have been said, many of them by Council Vice President Marshak. I do believe we are at a fork in the road moment for our community. I do think we are short on these kinds of amenities, especially for things to do in the winter for families. I've got three little kids. I've said it over and over, there's less to do in this town than when I was a kid during the winter, and there's just, there's just no dispute about that. The economic impact is going to be significant for the city, and when I do think about how this will be an additional burden on taxpayers, the seven of us included, I have to weigh that against the economic impact and that amenity, and I don't do that lightly. What I will say is I'm thankful to previous councils for making bold decisions to invest in our community. Rotary Gardens, that was a bold decision. Camden Playground, Riverside Park, Hedberg Public Library, the Town Square, the Palmer Waiting Pool, our many, many miles of paved bike and running trails. Those were all public investments. None of them make money for the city. All of them do cost some money to keep up, but I'm thankful that those previous councils invested in this community for me and my family. I'm excited to support this as the next chapter in Janesville, to hopefully that we can keep and attract our best and brightest people here. I do hope that this council is able to show a very strong message to our partners in Madison. That is going to be a big hurdle that we have to accomplish. So I do hope that this is a strong vote from the council, that we send a strong message to Madison to support Janesville, to try to give us some of our fair share from those tax revenues they have up there. I'll be supporting this. Councilor Williams?
Been dealing with this for a few years. You know, when it first started out, it was 50-50, 28 million or something like that, and, you know, half of that was going to be taxpayers, and half of that was going to be private fundraising. And then we got up to 60 million, but we came down to 50.3. But it's still $7 to $9 million of private put into this. The rest of the money, whether it's local, state, or federal, is taxpayer money. I think it's a good project, I really do. It just has been handled wrong. I'm not blaming this council. I'm not blaming this group. I don't want to put blame anywhere. But it kind of seems like it has really divided this city. Kind of like, I guess the only other thing I can say recently would be like the transportation utility. It just, the numbers have been all over the place, the information has been all over the place. Makes it very difficult. I had a lot of other things to say, but one thing that also that makes a city livable are taxes for people to afford to live here. And yes, we need amenities, but the other ones that have been mentioned, like the parks. Well, you know, if we have a recession, and, you know, people say, don't be a naysayer, but, you know, that's kind of what the information is out there saying, and who knows? But the parks are not a big deal. We'll still have the land. If this fails, we've got a $50 million building that, you know, is city-owned building, and I don't know what we would do with it. So at this point, I think I would take the advice of the professor that did the study from Whitewater, after looking at the two feasibility studies, which is, start over. And so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak on this? Councilor Miller?
My thoughts on this have gone from one extreme to the next at one point or another. I always try to keep in mind, the youth are our future. And it's true. I've lived here 24-plus years, almost 25 years, and there is very little for teenage kids to do. Now, we're not just talking teenagers, we're talking all ages that would be utilizing this facility in the event it comes to fruition. I like the project. I don't like the operational plan. I don't like the focus that somehow loses our youth as being the priority. I feel like the priority has moved from our youth, our local youth, to the Jets, and I think that's something we need to reel in. I don't like that we are not given a solid commitment from the Jets as to what and how they plan to support this project. I think more needs to come, more needs to come out, and the transparency needs to be across the board. I don't feel like it is. I feel like the city is waiting on, the FIS group is waiting for the city to make a commitment so that maybe some other folks can join in the crowd, and maybe we'll make a donation. Maybe not. Could we get more if somebody committed first? We don't know. Because there's so many unknowns. I believe in our youth. I believe that this would be a fantastic thing for our community. I think that if we build it, they will come. But I am disturbed by the operational plan, and until something changes, I can't be fully supportive of this program.
Anyone else wants to comment on this? Councilor Markline?
Thanks, George, for everyone who came tonight, whether you spoke or not. Appreciate it. We had 39 speakers. I tallied up, 21 were yes, and 18 were no or maybe. And some of those no's or maybes echoed what Councilmember Miller just said, the project is good, but they, they had questions and concerns on business plans and other things. We had written comments tonight, what was it, 39 in support, two opposed, and four had concerns. I think over the weekend, thanks to a yellow sheet of information, it had my name on it, I got about 80 emails and calls, and they were probably about 50-50 with the same, the same thing. So I would agree that the community is sort of split on this a little bit, or maybe a lot. I remember 10 years ago when my wife and I were talking about whether I should get into the ring, and I hadn't announced it yet in, this time in December, 10 years ago. And GM had closed, the downtown was getting pretty sketchy. The mall was getting less and less businesses staying at the mall. People were leaving, and there was a general consensus that when the census would come out in 2010, or an update on it, that we would have lost maybe 6,000 to 8,000 people would have left Janesville. And we'd have tumbleweeds. I remember somebody saying tumbleweeds down Main Street. And a lot of people believed it. There was a lot of fear, fear of change. And you could, you could feel it, you could, you could see it in people's voices. Taxes were going up because expenses were going up. So what happened? Well, we hired a city manager. The council worked with him in the hiring and charged him to work with the council and the community to turn this around. Turn around these negative thoughts, and focus on the future, and stop kicking things down the road, and take action. Long-delayed fire station was built. The room was more crowded than this. We built a Taj Mahal bus garage, still standing and working just fine. We started working on the roads, fixed the damn roads. We heard it from Billy McCoy right here in this exact room. We are fixing the damn roads. Costs money. We have to figure out ways to do it. We looked at alternatives to fixing the roads. They would have saved us money in the long term, but they would have cost us money upfront. We weren't pushing it onto a future generation. We were taking care of it today, and that's how we're doing the road. The wheel tax pays, today's payers pay for it today. We turned the landfill around, we're paying into that, so we're not putting debt onto our children, and we are saving the taxpayers money on the, on the interest money that would have gone higher. By making a one-time jump in our fees, they've not really gone up much recently on the landfill. We're doing the same thing on the water bills. Instead of borrowing and paying high interest rates and charges, we are saving money to the taxpayers down the road for our children, so they don't have to pay for our expenses today. It was hard. It was a change. It was scary, but it is working. We passed something else tonight, earlier tonight, that'll save us $15,000 in interest because of the way we're doing business. Change isn't always easy, but standing still or putting something on hold is not an option. You put a piece of metal outside in the wintertime, it's either going to rust if you don't maintain it, or you're going to have to maintain it and take care of it. You either move forward in this city, or you move backwards. I look at this as I looked at everything else we've done over the last 10 years, in the downtown, and our streets, and everything we've done as an investment in Janesville's future for our kids. I want them to stay in Janesville. I want them maybe to get out and see the world, but come back to Janesville. We had somebody earlier tonight said that's what they did. Mr. Benson said that's what he did. We want to attract and retain our families. We want to attract and retain businesses. We want to be an attractive community for people to move into. As someone earlier said that worked for Blaine, they would know. They have to hire people, they have to bring them to Janesville. What if they find three or four good people, and all three say, huh, I'm not moving there, there's nothing to do? That's why this is an investment. And it's going to cause you, when you make an investment, there's risks and rewards. We had somebody mention that tonight, right off the bat. Risks and rewards, focused on the risk. You also got to look at the rewards. The failure to do this, or to move forward and just tread water or go backwards, is it's going to cost you, the taxpayer, a lot more money than you would ever believe, because the costs are going to increase and the tax base is going to go down. The Janesville malls taxes, taxes went down something, what, we lowered it, what, $4 million in assessment? That money goes into the city taxpayers' share. So the more the council can do, and the city can do to attract businesses that are successful and attract families here, helps us all. The rising boat helps all of us. Sitting on our hands doing nothing will cost us more money than $50. I can guarantee that to anyone out there that's listening, that's on a fixed income and thinks by doing this, it's going to cost them more money, it will. But not doing it will cost you a lot more. You just won't realize it, but your taxes will go up more every year than it would if we continued to do this. The hard facts of life. It's what we've been struggling with here for 10 years, trying to do a budget. It's not easy, and the state is not helping us, the political divide in Madison, they're gridlocked, nothing's going to happen, I can tell you that right now. I wish I was sticking around a little longer to try to help it, but I made a commitment to my family, 10 years. So I'm out of here. And some other council member will make the final vote, because that's all we're doing tonight, is trying to leverage our money to get some more state money and federal money. And the more attractive we look to them, the more likely they are to look kindly on this and grant it. If they don't grant it, the project most likely will go pfft. If they go forward with it, the council will have a decision when they see what the bids are, whether or not it's worthwhile to go forward or not. We don't know today, but we can take steps to try to make it happen. And that's what we're going to do this evening on this vote. We're going to try to make it happen. No guarantees, but we're going to give it a try. Thank you.
Councilor Jackson?
I've struggled with this vote. I've struggled with the issue. I've been solidly on both sides. Someone talked to me the other day and sternly told me how I should vote. I asked that individual, how much time have you spent on this issue now that you're instructing me as to how I should vote? The individual said, I read an article in the newspaper. I said, I don't know how many hours I've spent on this, but I'm going to say conservatively, trying not to exaggerate, but conservatively, I've spent 100-plus hours on this. Not just reading a newspaper, but I've been interviewed, I read paper after paper, email after email. I've been on the radio, on and on and on it has gone, plus the materials and the memos handed down from the city, and meetings at this desk, and other meetings as well. So 100 hours, perhaps it's 200 hours. But by golly, I'll tell you this, I know more than just having read something in the When I choose to punch a button in a minute, yes or no, it's going to be a result of a lot of time, a lot of preparation for this very moment. I take it seriously. Not for my sake, but for the sake of this city that has elected me to represent this city for the best possible way and in the best possible end. Want to close my thought with this. The other day, I spent quite some time in the mall. I walked individually, just walked it to look at the mall. I spent a half an hour or so with the manager of the mall. You heard her speak earlier. I asked her a question, and I'm not going to put words in her mouth, but she couldn't answer the question, and I understand, she gave me a reason. But I said, how many employees do you have in this mall? Kohl's, Ultra, Dick's, all of the mom-and-pops, the popcorn place that I love, all of those other individual businesses? How many? Security, maintenance, custodial? She couldn't give me an exact number. I didn't expect an exact number. I said, can I guesstimate 200? Would 200 be fair? She said that would probably be a fair amount. I said, if this mall goes belly up? She wouldn't confirm that that is a risk. How could she? How could she? But I'm going to make that assumption. I'd just walk the mall. If it goes belly up, what happens to those 200 people? We're talking about raising property tax $30, $50 a year. We're not talking about throwing people out on the street. But if the mall goes down, there's 200 people that are out on the street, plus attendant businesses. Just take a quick drive from Highway 14 to Mount Zion. Look at the old Puig facility. It's been vacant since 2017. 2017? What if the mall closes down? How long will that albatross be on the city's neck? Because no one wants to buy it. How long has GM sat empty? These are jobs. This is our reality as a city. And we've got to do something. We can't, we don't have the luxury of just sitting here on our hind ends, doing nothing. We've got to move. Our, we will be passed by Beloit or other cities. And frankly, Janesville is the better city. I'm voting yes.
All right. I just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Markline said. I think that not doing this is going to cost us a lot of money in the long run. Whether we like it or not, it's a competition, right? We need to be competitive in the marketplace for business and industry and as well as labor talent and labor pool. They can't come here if we don't have the pool of employees to operate those businesses. So it is a competition. We're looking at possible $74 million of economic impact to the cost of the property owners of about $17.3 million. You know, I think that's pretty significant for $4 a month on average for 20 years. I think we tend to take the risk of regretting not doing this. And for tonight, it's non-binding. We're not awarding contracts or anything else. Is there still questions that need to be answered? Absolutely. If we were awarding contracts tonight, this probably wouldn't go through based on some of the questions that we have. But this is a stepping stone, is to give faith or faith for our political people to expend their capital to try to bring revenue to Janesville, to try to make this happen, you know, with the grants. So to me, it's kind of a no-brainer. We're not out anything at this point. We're showing faith and pride in our city. Obviously, pride that you guys have coming down here and taking part in this. So we need to do the same. But there's obviously some questions and things that need to be hammered out, which will, I think, naturally work themselves out as we get past this hurdle. So I'm definitely in favor of this.
I think everyone's had a chance to speak, so please vote. That motion passes 5-2 with Benson, Marshick, Jackson, and Miller.